Last item we have this evening is administrative item thirteen dash forty-six zero one, administrative item, UDC Amendment Protected Streams Map. And I'm gonna get your name right, 'cause I asked how to pronounce it. So it's, Ms. Reed, if you would, give us the staff report, please.
Thank you. Okay. This is a request for a recommendation to the city council on a proposal to relocate the... Okay, let me back up. The protected stream map is a... The protected stream map notes where the protected stream... which streams are protected and fall under the streamside protection ordinance. On Skull Creek, on the upper end of it, it's in a residential area, and let's see. The handout that I gave you shows where it currently starts. At the bottom right of your page, and I have an extra handout if a member of the public wants one. At the bottom right, there's a blue dot, and that's where the protected streams currently start. This stretch of stream is underground box culvert and runs under or near three houses. And then daylights for about sixty feet here where it's blue in the center, and then is enclosed underneath these next three houses in orange, and then daylights towards the top of the page in the blue. This area also experiences a lot of flooding, particularly down Walnut Avenue. And so the city engineering office has identified this as a, you know, a place to do a flood relief project. So our studies have... The yellow line is showing where we can do a best fit box culvert to provide flooding relief for this undersized system, which would also outfall where the current outfall is. This will divert a lot of the flow off of this existing system, so we felt it would be appropriate to move the beginning of the streamside protection ordinance to this point downstream where the new drainage would outfall and where also where the existing drainage outfalls. And I did have an email from Ms. Rebecca Harrison today. She wanted it... wanted to go on record that she is adamantly opposed to this change, and she adamantly opposes the construction that Mr. Morton has proposed on the previously wooded lot, which is the lot where the open stream is there. And I can answer any of your questions?
Okay. If you have any questions, we will certainly ask them. It looks like there's quite a few people here to discuss this item. Is there any member of the audience here to have comments to this item? If you could, please state your name.
Eden Reeve. I have the house at where it daylight. And I spoke with Ms. Reed today about this project, and I understand the need for some change to this drainage system. My concern is what will happen when the additional water load daylight on my backyard? Which happens to be, I mean, our house is, you know, within the... not just within the stream management zone, but also within the... Like the waterside zone? Yeah, yeah. We're, you know, it's very up close and personal for us. So my questions are, I know there will be a lot more water coming out of that system, and I know there will have to be some accommodation for that extra water. And I know we talked about there might need to be improvements to the channel. And of course, I don't want any changes to the channel, but I know that you have to deal with more water. Would the upgrades to the channel past that point be required or optional for property owners?
I can respond to that. The engineering division is planning to address this as we finalize our design. It'll be a combination of looking at the existing channel and looking at the increased peak flow, the increased velocity of the water coming out of the larger pipe, and, you know, we can look at what it will take to not have downstream scour to slow the water back down, and we can look at the effects of the water flowing out of the box culvert into the above-ground stream, and we can coordinate with the property owners what would be the best approach to make that transition into an open channel to protect from scour.
Mr. Chair, could I ask her a question?
Certainly.
Are we gonna have... is there gonna be an increase in water, or is it gonna be the speed of the flow that's gonna increase, or both?
It'll have the same drainage area, but it'll be more efficient, and it will be flowing faster because it's in a larger box culvert. And because it'll be more efficient about how it gets there, you'll see a larger peak flow than what was previously seen.
Any other member of the audience? If you could, please state your name.
Ian Drew McQuaid. I live at five eleven North Walnut, which is just southwest of where it daylight. I've never had any problem until like ten years ago with water in my front yard, which I... has gotten worse in the last ten years. I don't know exactly when, but at some point curb and gutter was put in maple, but there was no drainage to take care of any surface water, and more or less has caused that water to channel, turns and comes down Walnut. And once the city realized that was a problem, they addressed the culvert that goes under Walnut Avenue right before it daylight. It wasn't just a box culvert. They dug up the street, they put in black drainage pipe, and it made the problem worse. I'd say a half a dozen times in the last ten years, I've had water in my front yard. I don't know if any of you have seen a YouTube video entitled Walnut River. That was April twenty-eleven. It's probably as bad as it ever been, has ever been there. I've seen it. I gazed at by the front steps of my house, the water was, maybe it's on the video, I don't remember exactly, but I remember a time or two before that, I remember vividly in two thousand and three, my neighbor, I was... I think it rained at night, and you said, we were talking, next morning, said I wish... he wished he would've known it was coming, he would've got his kayak out, it would've been a nice run from Lafayette down to her house. And I chuckled, but, you know, he was serious. Anyway, I oppose this, doing it at this point, because it's creating a time gap, and I haven't heard any rationale why this needs to be done now. In light of the fact the city's addressed this, and they've known it's a problem, and you admit it's a problem, and by this YouTube video can see it's a problem, you're just creating a time gap where the drainage can become worse, there'll be more floods, maybe higher. I mean, I'm not afraid I'm gonna, you know, wash away in the middle of the night or anything like that, but I just don't understand the rationale where somebody could explain why it needs to be done now, why there needs to be a time gap from now until this problem is solved, why this problem needs to be made worse by removing the protection. If they wanna just add the top part and add the protection up there, I could totally agree with that, but it's also where it daylight, which, I mean, this building and the lot has been mentioned, I, you know, that's not really what it's at issue in my mind, but removing the protection right there is just gonna make the flooding worse. I don't understand why the problem should be made worse before it's made better.
How will it be made worse?
Well, removing the protection is not gonna make it better, is it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you might just have the applicant... I mean, have him finish his questions, and then we can maybe respond in one time.
Yeah, that's... I'm following with your line of thinking, because I myself, I'm kinda... I guess I'm gonna sound kinda silly, but I'm kind of lost as to what this whole thing is, what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I'll put a question, why I so...
I might be able to, if I could clarify, or maybe if we have any other public comments.
Well, that's... I was gonna say, is... Mr. McQuaid, were you done?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Okay. If you could, please state your name.
I'm Angela Noble.
Okay.
And I live at five-five-nine North Walnut, which is where the creek runs through my living room floor. Um, yes, that house. And actually, if you go into my crawl space, it looks like a concrete casket, so the water actually does run through my living room. So I have several concerns, actually. Our street is terrible when it does flood. I've been fortunate enough that it has not gone into my property as far as much into my grass. Eden has a perfect concern on what we're gonna do as far as the future of that property goes. Andrew's concern is what are we gonna do when that happens, and is it gonna make it worse? I agree with all of that, but I've... then I have an extra concern, is how are you gonna stop the water from flowing underneath my house? And then if it does get worse, before it gets better, is my basement gonna flood? Is my hole underneath of my house gonna flood? Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah.
I think my house is very unique because I have a creek that runs through it.
Sounds...
Yes. And I'm not in a flood zone, and I often wonder if I should be in a flood zone. Even when we had the large flood in two thousand and eleven, my basement did not flood. I was completely protected. But I would like to remain that way. So I guess my question is, how would you block that off from where my house is? And then, again, how are we gonna improve it before it gets... or how, you know, how are we gonna make it better?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment?
First night on... Aubrey Shepherd again. First night in a long time. Anybody else here has showed up to talk about actuality of flooding in our city and the underground water? Now, as you can see, up on the map, you can't see the yellow lines, but it goes from maple intersection to where the blue goes and...
It's here.
Yes, thank you. And but the blue line is... where does it relate to? The old blue line under that lady's house. So that's her house. And are we to guess that that's water that's in that pipe coming out in there, or that's the old flow area that was not completely built and still exists? And those are questions that are hard to sort out. Nobody wants to dig up all their yards or trace it. I don't know what they're gonna do either. I was very concerned about this. The first thing is, though, to go back to the basic reason to just not change the map because of this. The flood, the protected zone, if it's to function downstream, has to begin in the first... where the first stack of water falls that flows into that stream, wherever it is, way up on the mountain or just nearby. But everything is headwater of something on our hills. And some places you can stand, spread your feet a little bit, be in two watersheds, Illinois River and the... and Beaver Lake watershed at the same time. And it's true of all the small streams that are tributaries in either one of those major watersheds. So it's a watershed question, and I've talked about these houses that have the underground water flowing under the prairie areas, such as on Government Avenue, where they're bur... not... they're burrowing crawfish that live in the topsoil within a few feet of the surface that come out when it rains, come to the surface, because they're carrying their little babies and have to get them out to oxygen. Crawfish don't breathe water. They breathe oxygen, just like we do, in a different way. And then in the underground systems that you find in the... because of the karst geology we have, which runs across in many different angles through our city, the one on Government Avenue in particular, that cemetery would like to acquire a part more of that. And they just most recently have been able to acquire parcels in the floodplain, in the over karst geology for the cemetery, and have to take that back to the sale barn property, which had a lot of high ground that matched the cemetery, went to apartments because we didn't have enough public pressure to stop that the second time it came through. And so the underground water that's actually there, not related to the karst, is there with these white or almost clear-bodied crawfish that have smaller pinchers than the ones that burrow. And I've actually been down into a basement of a house that now is burned, and told you guys about it before, that those crawfish are there. Something similar is going on even on these hillsides where this is. There's underground water flows that are natural and original, and there are those that have been changed because of man-made activities, such as building a house foundation there, such as putting a pipe in to try to alleviate the problem. You also guide other things away, and those pipes are never quite big enough. The one on Locust Avenue, where the new trail section's going in, into Locust Avenue, go look at that. We don't... it's still gonna flood the house at the very end of Locust on the... it's between the two streams, between Tanglewood and Spout Spring Branch and adjacent to Walker Park. I think this needs vetting a lot more before it happens, because these folks who are here just represent a few that... I mean, I like the gentleman talking about canoeing or kayaking on that street. Well, Gunter, I was thinking that they were talking about where the water go... at the end of Gunter, where it hits the Walnut, it's a wide stream down Gunter, coming from the east. And it's not even... according to this, it's not the maiden channel even of Skull Creek, if we were to take Skull Creek's origins, we're on this red line or the blue line up there. So nobody alive remembers what it was like at a certain point, but I have heard talk about how these... some of these things were done by people who worked in the engineering department twenty or more years ago, and they're, you know... These right here mostly were built so... houses were built so long ago, I don't know, that pipe must've been in before the subdivisions were built, and they didn't know what would be built upstream. We have to be protecting, keep the water where it falls, on lots, all the way up on Mount Sequoia, and on every other place where water falls, we need to know where it goes and encourage it soaking in. There was an article in today's newspaper bragging about the housing developments in South Fayetteville that are low energy use, very efficient houses, and picture they displayed was a lot that had some construction on it before, some old buildings on part of that lot, and pavement area partially, but it also had a bunch of soil that soaked... that water soaked in. And we've got to include low-impact development that won't let water rush down on the surface or below, and affect existing residents and the wildlife that live in those caverns and in those little ditches and natural streams. And, you know, that's enough for tonight, but I support these folks in believing that this may be something that should be taken, looked at, taken seriously and looked at more closely before you just dig up the streets and do all this construction to put in those bigger pipe. Might be the best solution, but it needs a close look. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thirty-one else that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission commissioners.
I just come in. Questions, couple of questions. Ms. Reed, is this the same... this is the same stream that basically goes into pipe at Olive Street, right?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. I remember that, because somewhere we talked about this when I was on council in oh-six or something, I think is when this discussion started.
Mm-hmm.
And it was quite an extensive project, but... so the city's been designing this project, then, to try to divert water? I got you. Do they have to have this approval to move... is this... I guess this is the first step in trying to get that project going?
As we move forward and finish with the plans and get it ready to go out for bid, this won't need to go to city council until it's to approve the construction bid. And so we want to have, you know, basically what our... how we're gonna treat this as far as it being in a streamside protection area and us rerouting it. You know, we basically like to have that settled for how we're gonna proceed, because, you know, once we get to the point of approving a construction contract, then we'll have already decided how all this will be treated.
Okay. I remember when that discussion first started, there was a lot of outcry from the people that lived there to do something about the water, because I remember some flooding back in the mid-two thousands that started that impetus. There were quite a few people requesting the city do something about it. And I know Mr. Gully with Transportation spent a lot of time trying to keep the... that culvert clean specifically where it hits Olive Street. And he's... I remember him and staff walking down through that culvert as far as they could, and he said that that culvert is quite old, that the condition of it is not in very good shape. And the problem is, and Aubrey just mentioned that, is you've got a lot of houses built on top of it, so it's not like the city can go through and just tear it up and try to rebuild it. So I know the city struggled with trying to figure out how to capture some of that water and divert it, and I remember seeing this plan way back when. Has the engineering taken anything... I mean, I can't speak for more than two people, but have they taken anything to the people in that neighborhood to kinda show them what the design is and what the long-term idea is? Because it seems like from what their comments are, they don't really...
Right.
They're not a percent sure.
And we haven't yet, and that would definitely be a step in this process. And there will be some drainage easement that will need to be acquired. There's not a lot. But that'll be, you know, involve the neighborhood also.
Seems like this has created more questions than it has anything.
Yeah.
But I... I guess what I'm saying is it seems premature maybe to do this until there's more education on what the city's plans are. That's my opinion, at least.
So it sounds like you're saying that you need input on what the... what the residents of this area...
I think they do, yeah.
How they want their drainage fixed.
I think they wanna know what the city's plan is and how it's gonna alleviate... why the city thinks it's gonna alleviate the problem, because it sounds like they feel like it's gonna make it worse, and that's not a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
And kind of piggyback on that, that was my comment pretty much precisely, is that I know that the city's done charrettes and has done a lot of community involvement projects. You know, and if this thing has been a persistent problem, or probably, I would say, longer than it's been well done, ten years or whatever. You know, if it's something that is obviously affecting a concentrated portion of the city like that, I'm familiar, I used to live over there years and years ago, you know, that's... that is pretty much the low point, or one of the low points of the city, that every time it rains, I mean, I can remember the old, what was it, Dr. Martin's or whatever the doc...
Sure comes out down the hill.
Yeah. Doubt. Whatever that was, I can't remember the bar, but they used to get washed out just about every time. But that's what I would... I would suggest is that if there's any way that you could get a... just some kind of community meeting or letterhead out to the people that are going to be directly affected by either the construction or hopefully by the diversion of the water. I don't know, is that... what ward is that?
Two.
Uh, Kenyon?
Matthew.
Yeah. I would urge you...
Matthew.
Yeah. I would urge you all to communicate your concerns back to your council members, and that's not to put you off. I mean, the council members that you have in that ward are very active in city council, and I know they're not afraid to speak, so, you know, that might get them all rolling. You know, I'd hope that you guys could come to some resolve. And to answer Ms. Noble's question, as far as how, in a situation like that, and I know this is probably more technical than what you'd rather get into, but as far as protecting her home, if that... if that creek does in fact get shut off to the way that it's flowing right now, or does that get shut off, or is it just minimized? Is it diverted around, or...
This plan proposes to divert most of, like, all the water that you can through the new on-street drainage path, but there would still be water flowing through this older route, you know, water that it picks up...
So it would just be residual flow?
Along this route.
Okay. Because you're not...
But it'll fit into these culverts better, because they won't be already full of water like they are now.
Okay.
And so it would not be... The culverts there now would not be defunded, but they would be getting a lot less flow.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
On... I think, you know, we've certainly heard a lot of discussion about the drainage issues that we know that are in this area of the city, and the city has been looking at that and evaluating plans to improve the drainage area. What you have before you tonight is not really that drainage plan. All you're looking at is just, you know, basically, you can see on the exhibit here, there's a stream that's in a pipe for a long, long, long section. There's a very small portion that daylight's right across a property owner's property, and then it goes back into the pipe again underneath three more houses. And we feel like it's appropriate to bring this before the commission now, because I think we can make the determination now that this stream is not going to be daylighted along this section here, so there's no need to protect this, you know, very small stretch and keep it in the streamside protection zone. So it's not... I think all these drainage issues, I mean, those have to go through the public process that we talked about, through getting, you know, the... you know, that plan approved, but I think what we're looking at here is just this one small section that they're asking to take out of the protected streams.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, but I also appreciate, you know, a handful of people that sat here for almost three hours, and I think they'd rather walk out of here with some kind of feeling like they got some kind of answer to a question that they came, you know? And I understand that that's what we're looking at. And with that...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like just to make one point. What is being requested here is to be able to remove the restrictions the city has from the streamside protection ordinance in order to fix the problem. If the streamside protection ordinance remains in effect, even though the stream is not there, it's in a pipe, we are somewhat restricted on doing anything to be able to resolve the problem. In order to resolve the problem, we have to make the water go in different locations and maybe remove it, remove some of it from the pipe, which is not a stream, but maybe at one point was a stream. I don't know if it followed the normal stream or if it was diverted years ago. We don't know. But in order to do something to help you all and to help your entire neighborhood, we have to take the restrictions off of our engineers here. And this is... she's our stormwater engineer. She does this for a living, and she's done it for many years for Fayetteville. Now, before a final plan is done, I do agree that we probably should have a charrette with the neighbors to show you what the city thinks is the best solution for this. But before we can get there, we have to untie the hands of our engineers for this one little area of this stream, which is not a stream, but qualifies because it drains more than a hundred acres. That's why there's so much water there. So that's really what's being done, requested here, simply so that the engineers can move forward with their plans to help your problem.
Ma'am, I understand, I agree with what you're saying, except probably doing now creates a time gap. It's like, I mean, I don't know when it's gonna get funded. When project... and it's kinda like it's...
Project, it sounds like it's not, you know, ready to go even bid or go anywhere at this point. But removing that protection in effect now just creates a time gap between now and then when the situation, the surface water in my yard, when, you know, spring rains, is gonna get worse. And I don't understand, I haven't heard the rationale why that has to get worse before it gets better. I understand the want of the city, I mean, because they're bound by the streamside ordinance also, they can't do anything in, you know, fix the stream also. I understand they can't do that construction technically without getting a protection or a variance of some way, but I don't understand why that has to happen now and the time gap has to be created when the situation with the surface water, the flooding in my yard has to get worse. So, that's where I disagree. Long term, I agree. I can see that. I can see that that's gonna happen. Short term, I don't understand why there has to be a time gap where it can get worse. I still don't understand.
Well, I think, I think what we're trying to accomplish by approving this this evening, what that does, it initiates the process to, instead of having a time gap, I think it will put the wheels in motion to where we can actually get some kind of resolve started. I mean, I mean, what, what you're saying as far as how it's, how it's gonna create a time gap, it's gonna create, that it's gonna flood your yard worse, and I'm not trying to sound mocking at all, I don't, I don't, what you're arguing is, is that this is going to create a situation where you're gonna have worse flooding? Is that, is that the concern that you have?
It's going to, removing the protection will allow flooding to get worse until it's alleviated.
Okay, Mr. Thompson?
I'm not sure that this is a kind of appropriate name, maybe one time, but I think the gentleman is referring to a piece of the puzzle that you don't know about, and that is that this property is being proposed for development at this point. So, that, I believe, has something to the time gap and the potential for making flooding worse, and that's, is that correct?
That's correct. I didn't really think that.
They're not aware.
I make a lot of the issue. I don't really see how it is, but.
I don't think they would consider that.
Somebody does put hard structure there. I mean, it got worse several years ago when they added on this creek by the public tree. They took out a large annual tree and the backyard was filled in, and that probably made it worse in April of 2011. Another house at that base lot is gonna make that much worse. I mean, once again, I'm not saying I'm gonna get worse away, you know, you know, my wife, you know, is gonna wake up and our bedroom's gonna be full of water, anything like that. I understand all the stuff we've been through tonight, this is pretty small to say this, but, you know, I have enjoyed living in that neighborhood 25 years. I don't have enjoyed, over the last five or 10 years, the worsening situation of the flooding in my front yard. I don't want it to get worse.
Okay.
I want it to get better before it gets worse.
Okay, well.
If you approve this, I mean, I can't believe that if you don't approve this, it's gonna stop engineering in their tracks from pushing drainage up Project World. Maybe you explain that to me also. Is that how the city works?
Well, I don't.
I think the public comment has been closed unless you have a question for any member of the public.
And I don't. Okay, and I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Chair, I just had a question from Mr. Thompson. Can you tell us what, because I didn't understand what this time gap issue was, but if, if I understand it correctly, there's a couple unbuilt lots, one of which has the open section stream in it, and if we remove this protection now, then somebody could potentially build a house on that, is that, is that correct?
If we went to go down this road, is that advisable at this point?
Well, let me point out to all the neighbors, this must also go to the city council because this is a council action, and certainly I think the city council will be interested in your comments there. I was not aware there was gonna be a proposal for a house being built right there. I couldn't understand where your time gap is coming from. I don't think it is the administration's intent to allow this to get worse before we can get a full plan together. So, I think that certainly it'll be at the city council for a hearing there, and you're quite welcome to come to the city council and express your opinions.
Mr. Thompson, I mean, is that?
I'm just wondering if my assessment of the situation is correct, if that's what the time gap thing is about.
But probably you should take some action here so it can get to the city council.
Right, and that's kind of.
Sure, I'm happy to take action. I was just wondering if, is that what that means? The time gap. I didn't understand it.
Part of the background was, this is a vacant lot that a property owner wants to develop. That is a part of the fact, the equation as well, is that when we looked at this with the property owner, me and Mr. Thompson and Ms. Reed, they wanted to develop this property, and, you know, it is, the streamside zone is restricting their property, and they also did ask us to look at it and say, hey, you know, you're piped on both sides of us, you know, is it really any reason to have this, why is this in the streamside protection zone? And that was part of it as well, is we, you know, we looked at it and realized, you know, right, you know, it probably does not need to be in the streamside protection zone for a lot of other factors that Ms. Reed discussed with you, so, I don't know if that's, it's just all the background we have, I guess, is.
Well, that's clouding things even more for me because now we're, now you're telling me that we're lifting the streamside ordinance. Is that an actual stream that you're?
Well, it's open, where it's dark blue, it is open. It's not piped. And that would qualify as a protected stream because it is emptying more than 100 acres. Is that right, 100 acres?
That's right, yeah.
If you, if you feel like you don't wanna make a recommendation, I think you can refer it to the city council for their consideration without any recommendation if you want to.
I'd be good on that. Motion, comments?
I'd like to make one comment. The vacant lot is buildable with or without the streamside protection zone being on it. It does affect how close the house could be to the stream or to the street, but it is a buildable lot, and so by right they can do a driveway and, you know, the additional roof space that may add more water to the situation, and that can happen with or without this being in the streamside zone. I mean, we could have, it could become approved or a variance could be requested, and the streamside would just affect more how close it could actually be to the stream.
Well.
I'm just really confused.
Well, and that's, I don't, I don't wanna sound inflammatory because the questions I have, this, now everything just, it doesn't, it doesn't sound right with that little nugget of information. I'm not comfortable with that at all. And I'll just, I'll keep my comments to that, so.
But there needs to be some motion on this item.
If I could, I would.
I'll make a motion, Ed.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion that we forward this to city council without a recommendation. It's gonna be a motion.
Second.
I don't have, it's ADM 13-4601.
So, we have a motion to refer this on to city council from Commissioner. Second from Commissioner.
Bunch?
Yeah.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoffman?
No.
Montal?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Munch and Currys?